Good evening, welcome to the January 24th meeting of the regular meeting of the Hyde Park Zoning Board of Appeals. We welcome you tonight. Let me, before we begin, give you notice. You know we have a little construction going out here. If there's a fire, you can't get out that way. They refuse to open their construction site for us to go out. So, in case of any emergency, you'll need to exit either the exit you came in, which is here, or go out the hall and turn left and go down there. There's two exits there. So, everybody can... And the audience gets to go first, so go fast.
Fastest first.
Let's start by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the minutes for the September 27th, 2023, available for approval. I would move for their motion...
Motion?
All in favor? Opposed? Okay. New business. We do need to reappoint the vice chair for 2024. Will we have that resolution?
Sure.
Would you... Paul, would you...
It's right in the text.
Right in front there. Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
So, resolution designating zoning board of appeals vice chairperson for the year 2024, January 24th, 2024, Resolution 2024-A. Now be it resolved that Gerald Bowen be designated the vice chairman of the zoning board of appeals for the year 2024, authorized to conduct meetings of the zoning board of appeals and assign resolutions and related documents, including invoices and correspondence on behalf of the zoning board of appeals in the absence of the chairperson.
It has been moved by Mr. Donnelly, and I would second that. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, sir. You've got another year.
Thank you.
All right. New public hearings. We have the Spice Handler and Brown 23-16Z at 22 Van Work Place. This is an area variance, Section 108, to change the required minimum frontage on a street from 25 feet to zero feet in consideration of the right-of-way to the subject parcel to permit the installation of a standby electrical generator associated with an existing single-family dwelling. I would move for a... To open the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, notice of the public hearing was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on January 17th, 2024.
So noted, thank you.
Hi, how are you?
And tell me again your name.
I'm Fritz Brown. My husband's...
And I'm Steven Spice Hamper.
Oh, good, good. Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
Would you... Do you want to review... Just to review quickly what you're seeking the variance for and why?
Oh, yes. We encountered a tree fall last year, and it rendered our house unlivable for seven months and was about $35,000 worth of damage, and I'd like to never have to go through that trauma again. We've approached a company called Essential Powers that would do a standby generator, and they encountered the zoning issue when they tried to pull permits.
Okay. And this is... You're asking for a permit to allow you to have access through that one road, through the other... Ownership property?
Yeah.
We have ownership. We have access.
We have access, de facto.
The variance would be... The town code requires at least 25 feet of frontage on a road for any property. Here, because there is no legal ownership over the driveway...
Right.
...there is no frontage on any road.
Now, I noticed that you have had the fire department. Can you tell us the results of that?
Okay, I did speak to one gentleman who actually went on two calls up at the house over the years, and that was Craig Elderkin. And then Ray Davis sent us just yesterday, I believe it was...
Mm-hmm.
...this letter outlining some demands, and we've successfully met those demands, I believe, with...
And signed a contract for someone to take care of some of those issues.
Does the contract include, I know, eight feet to 12 feet? Does it include any grading of that road?
No grading, no. We've actually blacktopped it so that it's less steep, and not the whole road, rather just, I think, 20 feet of it at the head, yeah.
The earliest part of the road is blacktopped, and after that is gravel.
Okay. And the width is still eight feet or 12 feet?
The width is seven and a half feet, they claim. I would like to double-check that, actually.
Okay.
Looks like a good 12 feet to me.
Our contractor thought that looked like an underestimation, but we didn't have a chance since we got this to check that out.
Okay. So, the result of the fire department is, do they feel they're able to get their vehicles up there?
Do you not have this letter in hand?
We do.
Oh. They say they can get a utility fire truck up there. They would like to see it enlarged. I honestly think a utility fire truck would serve the small property should need be, but it's your call.
Okay. Is that any... Counselor, is that any... What implication does that have on the...
Well, so the purpose of having frontage on town road is to ensure access to the property in case of an emergency. I did review the letter sent by the fire department. They did recommend that the road be widened a smidgen. But I have a question. Were there discussions with the Winnicky Land Trust about possibly obtaining ownership over that drive?
The Winnicky's not having a board meeting until... To discuss it, and probably many other matters, until, I believe, the 4th of February, and your meeting preceded it.
Okay. And will this will be a topic of discussion at that point?
It will be a topic.
Okay, okay. So, I think in deference to that, we'd like to certainly have their perspective on that in terms of...
If they do choose to transfer ownership of what is now an encroachment on their property, a recognized encroachment...
Mm-hmm.
...but it is an encroachment, it would lessen the variance required here, and that would help you greatly before this board.
I don't really understand.
So, right now, you're asking for essentially a 25-foot variance from 25 feet down to zero.
Uh-huh.
If you do obtain ownership over the drive, it would be 25 down to whatever the width of the drive is currently.
Be less of a variance.
Correct. And this board is legally obligated to give you the least variance necessary to obtain the benefit to your property.
So, what we'd like to do is wait to hear from them in terms of their assessment of this.
All right. So, if they say they will give us easement language...
Yeah, any type of legal claim over that drive?
Okay. So, if they say that, are you going to come back and ask me for a...
Something?
I mean, what else is going to hit us? Just to get this standby generator?
Yeah. Well, the issue is the lack of legal frontage. So, once you obtain the legal frontage, it would benefit you before this word.
Okay. And I know, Tad, last time we met, mentioned were other properties within the town that are in the same situation? I wonder if you could add any... Shed any light on how they deal with matters like this?
Well, we had... Excuse me. We had one not long ago on White Street in Statsburg, and it did not have the appropriate frontage. It was also landlocked. However, there was a strip, and I think it already had an easement over it.
It did.
And they... The fire department required some pruning of some trees so that it would be wide enough to get the truck down there without scraping the side of the vehicles. So, in that case, the board considered the facts and granted the variance.
Uh-huh.
So, it's...
That would be so nice.
If we can get the ownership or the right-of-way clear, I think that's the whole thing that makes the difference. I don't think we have a problem in terms of making a decision on it.
So, are you asking if a survey will be needed, or if a legal description will be required? Is that what you're asking to find out?
I just want to know what else could possibly bite us.
That's the only thing I'm thinking of, and that's kind of a...
Yeah, just proof of the easement, you know, showing ownership or a legal right to cross that road.
Is that going to be difficult?
I don't know. I've never seen a board meeting, Steve.
You're meeting with them in February?
I'm not meeting with them. They're meeting by themselves. It's their board meeting.
And they are... You know that they are taking that under consideration?
Yes.
Okay. But you're not... Okay. Because what we'd like to do, then, is continue this public meeting until our February meeting in...
I will be out of town.
When is that?
The 24th.
That is on February...
28th.
28th?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh.
Be our next board meeting.
Uh-huh. I've got my schedule in front of me.
Yeah. Is there anybody that can represent you?
What?
Is anybody... Can anybody represent you at the meeting on...
My husband.
Well, I could be here.
That's fine. Okay.
All right.
My question is just that we have found Winnicky difficult to connect with often, so I'm just less confident that things will be communicated the way you need to have them communicated. Because it's very hard for us to get through to them.
I understand. Have you sent correspondence to them?
We are in correspondence with Jen Adams, who is their operations person, I believe. She is actually quite responsive on email. Nothing has ever come from them on letterhead via the post office.
Okay.
So, would the board be looking for a resolution from the Winnicky board? I'm trying to figure out what...
Something that would indicate their permission.
To what?
Or their intention to transfer a legal ownership over the drive.
They were informed of the... They were informed, I imagine, of this variance request by mail. Did they respond? So...
They just sent us that legal sheet which said...
Which you have in hand.
Which said... Was a description of...
Right, the easement agreement.
Right, it was...
Correct. Which recognizes it as an encroachment that is existing and is allowed to exist, but does not transfer any legal rights over.
Right.
Either way.
Yeah.
Either legal...
Yeah.
...ownership or right-of-way. Yeah.
Could you say that again?
You're asking them for either ownership or right-of... Or easement on the property.
Right. And it does say in that agreement that they have the ability to transfer the encroachment to you, or give you some sort of legal right over it.
Do they have the will?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other public... Anybody else from the public comments? If not, I would move that we continue this to the February 28th meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. I'm sorry for the delay. Hopefully, we can get this clarified for you. Okay. Next is the NRI CIA Hotel and Villa. Variance here from... There are three... There are several variances. There are two permanent variances and one... And three temporary variances to continue the development. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
I think we are familiar with all of that. Now, we are waiting on the CEQA report. Do you anticipate... Do we know when that's...
February 7th.
February 7th?
It's their next planning board meeting. We've gone over with them the neg deck, and it's pretty much... That's almost completed, and...
Okay, all right. So, we'll have that. I know we need to have that prior to...
Any action.
...granting these.
Right.
So, I would then suggest that we just continue until the February meeting, and...
Could you open the hearing now and then see if anyone wants to speak, and then close it, so at least you got that out of the way?
Yeah, yes.
That'd be great.
I beg your pardon. Let's... I would move that we open the public hearing for the NRI Hotel and Villas. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, notice of this public hearing was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on January 17th, 2024. An application was also sent to the county for a referral under 239-M on January 3rd, 2024. They have 30 days to reply, which would end on February 2nd. I'm unsure whether or not the county replied.
At 4:00, nothing had been entered into the ramp system as a reply.
No, that's from the county. And then we have planning boards finishing. And you've met with them... Are most of the questions with... From them on the CEQA?
From the planning board?
Yeah.
Pretty much resolved. We... Tomorrow, we... They pretty much had a resolution ready to go last meeting, and then that one issue came up. And I think that's been resolved, and we revised the neg deck accordingly. We have a call tomorrow offline to discuss it, but pretty much the negative deck is ready to go.
So, we should certainly receive that.
Sure. On the 7th, before your next meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry. For the record, I need your name on the record.
Okay. Michael Zarren from Zarren &amp; Steyman's.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Apologize. Okay. So, I think with the CEQA and the county... Tad, we need to hear from the county on this?
Yes.
And we're anticipating that?
Yes.
And we're anticipating, then, the completion of the CEQA. So, we should be prepared to make a decision at the next board meeting. Okay. Then, are there any public comments? I would then ask for continuing the public hearing to February 28th. Is there...
Second.
Sorry. There was some discussion about potentially a special meeting?
I think, Sarah, thank you for raising that. I did raise that with Sarah, the possibility, because based on where the planning board might have been, but I think, as long as you're having a meeting in February, I think timing is fine. Thank you for raising that. Appreciate it.
Okay. So, we have before us the proposal for the public hearing continued in February?
Motion?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go home.
Sleep well, Mike.
Gasly weather, be safe.
All right, thank you very much.
And we'll see you, and I hope your conflict goes better next time.
I hope that six-four person with sharp elbows doesn't come back in the court and then we meet again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is a new application from Quality Inn. Good morning, good afternoon, evening, I guess it is already. This is an area variance to allow a sign face of 39.9 square feet, where 30 is the maximum permitted, and to change the letter heights from the maximum permit 10 inches to 28.5 inches for the letter Q. I don't know what Q stands for.
Quality.
Oh, quality. I'm kidding you. And to 14.625 inches for the word "quality." I would... We don't have a public hearing yet. We'll set that.
Hello.
Good evening. And you are?
My name is Jennifer Bykert from Timely Signs in Kingston. We represent Blink Signs, who is the sign contractor for Quality Inn.
Good.
They're not local, so they've asked us to do the permitting...
Okay.
...on this. Yes, the Quality Inn has an existing sign. It's still the 39.9 square feet. They are looking to update the faces on this sign to stay in compliance with the corporate standards. The existing Q on the sign is 44 and 1/2 inches, whereas the new Q would only be 28 and 1/2 inches, and...
The existing is 44?
Yes.
And you're going to 28?
Yes.
And, okay, and 14, so...
Yeah, and the existing word "quality" is 16 inches, and the new word "quality" would be 14 inches. So, it's actually coming down from what the existing is. But they would be using the same... The existing sign box, the existing lighting, just giving it a fresh coat of paint.
Do you have any... Do you have any drawings or illustrations of that?
We do. We provided those.
Oh, did we?
Yeah.
I beg your pardon.
I can give you mine if you need it.
I think we've got it here. While we're looking for that, board members, any questions? Mr. Agawal?
Chairman.
Mr. Donnelly?
I think Ms. Moss has a question.
Yes, Ms. Moss.
Chairman, because there is a provision in the sign code that if the sign is coming into more conformance, that variances are not necessarily required. So, the variance is being requested are for the size of the sign area and the letter heights, because they still don't meet code. However, I'm not requiring a variance for the overall sign height in hopes that the next time they change the sign, they will bring the sign height down.
Okay.
Maximum height is seven feet. I believe it's over 14.
I believe so.
Was there a variance to begin with?
No, it was issued under the old code.
Can we see your copy?
Sure. I don't think it would need to be renewed here.
Here it is. Thank you. Where is this?
Location of the sign is the same?
Yes.
I noted in driving from the south to the north, you are obstructed by trees. So, I don't see the sign until I'm right there. Are you planning to do anything for that?
As I said, we were hired just to do the permitting and possibly just the installation of the sign.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Hi. And your name?
Sam Patel.
Oh.
Yeah, my name is Sam Patel.
Yes.
I'm the general manager of Quality Inn.
Okay.
Slash owner, so, yeah, we have that big tree down there, but it's in the town zone, so I don't think we can cut that down.
That's correct.
In order to do that, we have to move the entire sign from that location to somewhere else, so...
Okay, but you're going to keep the sign...
Or to lower it.
I'm sorry?
Or to lower it.
Lower, same thing, right?
So that you can see under the tree, the tree limbs.
No, it's a very, very, very big tree. I mean, lower doesn't resolve that issue, I would say. We have to move, shift that sign to resolve that issue.
So, you're anticipating the signs stay in the same position, same place?
At this point, yes. We were planning to put LED, but LED weren't allowed, so we're just changing the faces of the existing sign, nothing else.
Okay, okay. And so, the total sign face would be larger?
Not from what is existing, no.
So, it's larger than is required now?
The lettering is actually being reduced.
All right. And I'm... Do you allow the sign face 39 by square to where 30 is?
30 is under the new code.
But this was old.
This is an old sign, so it's the same size.
Size requirements.
They're bringing it to... Okay. Now, I'm good. What is the requirement for... The current square footage is 30 feet, correct?
The current required square... Maximum square footage is 30.
And they want...
It already has 39.
They're already existing as 39.9. So, this is essentially... Should the board grant that variance, it would legalize the existing sign size under the current town code?
Okay, all right. So, okay, all right. So, the sign you have now, the size will stay the same?
Correct.
And it happens to be nine feet taller than what we would allow by code? Okay. And then your Q is going from 16 to 14?
No, it's going from the 44 to...
28?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other letters are going from 16 to 14?
Correct.
Okay. So, they are reducing from what they are now, both of those?
Yes.
And yet, those are still exceed our... Okay, all right.
Yeah, we created a design what exactly town said, so it's meeting the town's requirement.
Okay. Questions?
Just one question. The existing sign looks like it's on a pedestal that... I'm not saying you have to do this, but you could get a vehicle and mini crane or something to... Couldn't you pick that sign up and slide it further down to get out of the way of the tree? Because it's not in the ground that I see.
But it's on the concrete base.
But the base is not in the ground that I can see.
Right. Excuse me, but the electric comes up through that concrete base.
Unless they can... There's room to move it a few feet, the electric wire. Some food for thought.
Yeah, but look at it, I mean...
It'd be worth looking at, so you have better visibility.
Clearly, coming from the south, you don't see it till you're right on it. Okay.
I mean, but that is causing to move further, because we are already penalized by choice. I mean, it's been delayed a lot, so...
Okay, okay. Maybe just to suggest when that...
If they move it, they can lower it.
If they move it, they can lower it. Okay, all right.
I mean, next time when the... When this comes up, I mean, we'll definitely reduce it down and shift it.
Maybe a blinking light.
But this time, it's too late, and we are getting penalties, to be honest.
Have people said they've missed the sign and then had to turn around?
From the south, yes. And they've been saying that. Yeah. But I mean, I talked to the town, and that big tree cannot come out, so we have to physically remove the sign, I mean, yeah.
It's an old oak, and you know old oaks, they don't move. Okay. Any other questions?
No.
You're good? Okay. All right. Then, what I would do is move to...[1662.82] You're good, okay. All right, then what I would do is move to, set a public hearing for February 28th, 2024. Consider this.
Square footage.
I think we have all the information. We're not waiting for any other information on this. Okay. I would move, I would move for that. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we'll set the public hearing, we'll notify the people around you and we'll see you in February, on the 28th, see if we can resolve everything for you.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming.
Motion to refer to, Judge's County Planning?
Uh, yes. I do need a motion to refer this to the county for review. I would move that motion to refer this project to the county for review per municipal law 239-M. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Thanks very much. Be safe out there.
Quite foggy.
Yeah.
Here's your copy, man.
And last on our menu is the Anderson Center, 23-21Z. They're looking for three area variances to permit a front yard setback of seven to 50, seven feet where 50 feet is required to allow wall height of 17 feet where six is the maximum, to allow letter height of 12 inches where 10 is the maximum. We seem to be in the sign business tonight. Okay, welcome, sir.
Good evening. Brian Watts from Dasticos Engineering on behalf of the applicant, Anderson School.
Good, okay.
Is this, yeah, it is on.
Go ahead, go ahead. Tell us a little bit about this, please.
Good evening. I've got my son Wednesday best here to present a sign, an application that is currently before the planning board. Anderson School is currently before the planning board to make modifications on site and build a new Dellenwood home, house, the southwest corner of the property and some other sites on the main campus for storage. And as part of that, they are seeking to revise its entrance to help match all the improvements they made on campus over the years. One of the main issues that they've had is there's a real lack of security on who's coming, who's going. They got fences, but they have no real way of controlling it.
There's a gate there.
There's a gate, but.
It was usually closed.
Yeah.
You go up on one side, it opens on its own. It's vehicle motion sensor activated. Don't tell anybody.
I didn't know that.
And as the school grows and becomes more popular, they do have more traffic coming out of the main entrance here. This entrance is again on the southern side of the property.
Right.
They are looking to install some gates in this area and install two incoming lanes. And with all of this newfound traffic, we are also trying to provide a place for a discharge location for bus tra, bus stops. Currently, the stone walls come right along the entrance, just about right here.
Right.
And when they drop them off, they have to drop them off right in the middle of the pavement, not trafficked. And the sign is getting some wear and tear on it from being so close to the road. I think they've actually recently lost a couple chunks that they've just kind of put back on top. Don't tell anybody that either.
The O's are on top.
So we need to, we want to move those walls back and enlarge them so they're more in line with what the campus is becoming and hopefully will continue to grow and provide for this discharge area. And if they're far enough back, we're also, we don't have to worry about DOT either because we're staying out of the DOT right away, but we're still, with the 50-yard setback line, there's no real way to move them that far back in any capacity and still be functional so you can see them on Route 9 as you're heading north. You're, you'll come up, you'll go right by, you, you might see them as you go by, but we don't want you to go by, stop and visit and go through the new gates. So.
Will that gate be banned or is that just still?
This is not manned, but they're going to have more controls on here. They're gonna have swinging gates on in and out with pin pad controls and voice and vox to like a secure location where they can see these cars coming in so they know if the pedestrian access will come in. So this, this stone wall will have a big entry gate where this.
How far back is that new stone wall from, from?
Seven feet farther back than it currently is. It's currently right just about on the property line. So we're moving it farther back.
Okay.
So that we can create that area. With that new sidewalk coming up, this will be gated as well. So they'll be able to monitor any, any residents who might be leaving when they're not supposed to or anything like that.
So they'll be able to monitor pedestrian traffic as well?
That they'll be, this will be gated as well with, yes.
Okay.
So these new gated walls, so if this was, this was Route 9, this is the entryway in, this is the new sidewalk discharge area would be right, right in here with that sidewalk coming through with the gate right here.
Okay.
And this, these are, these are symmetrical other than the, the gate.
Right.
Part of the design that the Anderson wants to incorporate here is these pillars are now going to be, we're designing for 16 feet 10 inches. We're asking for 17, just to have like a two-inch construction variance. I hate to have Tad come out here and say, get your butt back here. They were off two inches for some reason, more to the natural stones they're going to be using. And the stone they're going to be using, this is a color copy of the stone on campus now, they're going to be matching what they've already used. They do have a quarry that they source all this from, so it all matches.
That's cool. On State Quarry Road, right?
To be honest, I didn't, I didn't ask them any questions. Like, okay, this is it. I'm gonna show it to them. I wanted to make sure they don't make a liar out of me.
And the sign is on the, on the right side there?
The sign is on the right side. The text font is, we're showing that to be 12 inches where code is 10 inches.
Relative to the, to your drawing on the left, your, your, no, go, go to the left, yeah, where would the sign be on that?
The sign would be in this area.
Okay.
Will be lighted?
I don't believe they have plans to light this. This is going to be like a carved recessed stone. It's going to be a natural material. They don't have much traffic at all here when it, when it gets to a darker time. After business hours, there's really nobody else that's coming here. But during the day, they do have multiple bus traffic trips and cars coming and going.
Now, I noticed you've got the other entrance was further north. No, the second entrance to the facility.
To Anderson.
The Anderson.
Yes. That's a service entrance.
Okay. What traffic goes out of that?
Just service, the service facilities are right on that, once you head down, right in, right in the gate, you'll find all the service facilities. So they don't have to go through all of campus with heavy trucks or anything like that.
And that is, that's, that's secured and, and controlled as well?
There is a gate as well, yes. It's actually, it's a, it's a little bit out of the way to get to it. It's, it's not shown.
Right.
But it would be, it's just before the nursing home. It shares that road.
Okay.
The, I'm familiar with the existing entryway. I do have a couple pictures if you'd like to see.
Yeah, please.
That just shows that the existing column height that's right against the property line is 13 feet plus or minus tall. Give you some of those. Couple more. This is the existing, this sign is not, is being removed. So that, that'll be gone, the post sign that's hanging up there. This would be looking north.
So you're going from 13 to 17?
Yes. And we're, as you, as you pull it back seven feet, it's.
Pushing it back.
If, if you were to, at eye height, if you were to carry your eyes to the 13-foot top of the column as is now and then continue another 17, another seven feet, you would, you would be about land where we're showing the column. So it's.
Okay.
The southern entrance of Marist actually has a similar layout, if you can, if you recall, on the southern side where the, where the students cross the street, they have a stoned archway as well over the sidewalk.
Okay.
Ours will be better.
But you won't have the underpass under Route 9.
Hey, but we have Hyde Park in the address. They can keep Marist.
Okay. All right. Anything else we should know about this? Looks like an interesting project.
Yeah.
What's your timeline on it? Do you know?
I believe the actual, this is, I believe this is going to happen first, if I'm not mistaken. Hopefully, as soon as we get, we tentatively get some approvals from the planning board and if this discretion of your board can allow us to, to construct as is.
When are you, are you before the planning board?
Currently, yes.
Currently, okay.
Mm-hmm. I hope they've been right of recommendation or maybe not a recommendation, but.
We haven't seen, we haven't received anything from them.
Have you asked for one? Maybe you should ask for one.
We should. Okay. Good. All right. Questions, gentlemen?
It was like a nice project.
No questions.
Yeah, it looks like a nice project. All right. Then I would move that we set time for the public hearing for, for our February 28th meeting. And I would also, that's, that's the first motion. Let me move that we set a public hearing for February 28th.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Motion, then we need to refer this project to the county for review. Permiss, we do?
Yes.
I guess we do. I would move then that we move this to the county for review under municipal law 239-M. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose? Okay. All right. So we will see you next, in February. Hopefully, we've got all the information, get you going.
Is there anything else you'd like in the meanwhile that might crush your mind right now that I can, I can try to get to you by then? Any, anything at all?
You may have sent, I'm not sure, I have not seen them, but the pictures that you shared with us?
Yes.
Yeah. Have you sent those to our office?
They've, I have to double check with.
If not.
I need it from my office, but I can submit those as well.
Yeah, that would be good. I think just to make sure we have that. And, and we will notify for the public hearing, everybody? Good?
And there are input from the planning board. Do you have to officially request that or do I just write a letter, Tad, do you think?
From the planning board?
You're going to request the secretary to send a note to the planning board asking for their input?
We don't have to formally do that.
I hope they like me. I hope they put, say great things about me.
On an evening like today, they can't help it.
It's been very good reviews on you.
Yeah. Like I said, my Wednesday best for you guys. Hopefully, that'll sway you one way or the other.
That's what it is.
Or at least Tad. Best, best, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, good. Thank you very much. We will see you in February. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Nice meeting you.
Be safe driving tonight.
I will try.
We have before us no further information, no further business. I would move to adjourn. Is there any, a second?
Third.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we'll entertain a third.
We have a, we have a re, Mr. Ross.
Need a one minute.
Sure.
It's not a topic for this, but. Since I'm here, I just want to bring it up with you guys. Any plan or any future plan for the city sewer?
For that?
City sewer, in every area?
That's a question for the town board.
Oh, not here?
Yeah, this is the wrong board.
The town board would be in charge of a project like that. He's asking if there's any plan to extend the sewer. But yeah.
Sorry, I didn't know.
We would encourage you to ask the town board and to get a response and I'm sure they say it's.
I already, I already reached out to them. I didn't get any response back yet. They said they'll get back to me, but we have a really.
Just for the record, how, how does that impact your, your facility?
So we have a septic and.
Where is the septic located?
It's in the parking lot.
Okay.
And it's not fulfilling the requirement. Like, we are utilizing more water during the summer.
Right.
And it doesn't have that much capacity.
Okay. Have you indicated to them that?
I said like, I mean, if you, because new businesses are coming, I see other, other businesses are also coming, so they should come up with something, I mean, this kind of solution. I mean.
Yeah.
So.
I would encourage you to vigorously approach them on that question. It's been a long-term question. I don't know if there are new plans on that. I know they're looking at some.
We got a letter, I guess, two years back. We got a letter that they are planning, but then suddenly stopped, I guess. So it's in the backseat or so. I don't know.
You, you would be one of the participants in that, would you not, in terms of voting for a sanitation? My understanding is that a sanitation district had to be formed. And there are 102 or 104 people on that strip that would be required to participate and pay for the construction of the.
I was ready to pay. I know that, but, but maybe not others, I guess.
Yeah. But I don't know if there's, yeah, that, that, that was like 24 million and over 30 years, of course. But I don't know if there's, if there is, I think there is further, there's now more discussion about an alternative way to do that, but.
Okay. I'll check with them.
And I believe there is, on the website, there's probably a link to the town board. I believe, I don't remember who your ward person is. Do you remember who Ward 2 is? No, I don't remember.
I'll figure it out, I just don't want to waste your time.
No, I appreciate you bringing it up because I think it's, it's, it's very germane to the whole development of, of that downtown area. And will have a significant impact on, on all of you who are participating.
And check the past agendas for the town board because I think there was an engineering study authorized to look at the feasibility of.
For, for a new approach, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Keep your voice on the table.
I will do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We are adjourned.
You adjourned earlier, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, 6:40.